Okay, I think we're gonna get started. So just say, say good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order.
Good job, excellent. Thank you. Now, do you want to join us up here until we finish and we get to your presentation? You want to join us?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, seeing, so we're gonna move to the open forum next. So I don't think we have anyone here for the open forum. So seeing as we don't have anyone here for the open forum, we will move to the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you will please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, you can just sit with me right here and we'll do this together. So, the first thing we'll do is, and now this is where I'll take it and we'll continue with you, is we have a presentation for Hazel and her family for mayor of, for a day. So let me get my stuff. Okay, so would you want to walk over here with me? And we'll take some pictures afterward. Hazel's family. Now Hazel, how do you pronounce your last name? Begonic. Okay, so today we have a presentation of Hazel Begonic, right here, and her family. Kristen and Eric. And Hazel has received a very special award tonight. So she, or not tonight, but earlier. So Hazel is a 5th grader here in Richfield. And she was one of the top three winners of the League of Minnesota Cities Mayor for a Day Essay Contest. So, there was over 450 4th, 5th, and 6th graders who submitted proposals. And they considered the question of choosing a specific service and sharing their ideas for that service. So, the contest is sponsored annually by the League of Minnesota Cities to help raise awareness of grade school students about the importance of city service and making sure that students are aware and they're interested in potential city career opportunities. So, we're gonna have Hazel read her poem, but just lastly, there was very rigorous judging of over 450 entries. And they were selected based on creativity, originality, and legibility. And folks received a plaque and even a check. So, we are very honored to have one of our own residents here Hazel, who won an award in this very competitive process. And we'd ask Hazel to please read about being mayor for a day.
If I were mayor for a day, I would make my Richfield library even better. First, I would suggest more advertising including social media and flyers. I would also encourage more kids to be volunteers so they can learn and experience how to be a librarian. Inside the library, I would put kid and grownup books together so that kids and their grownups can experience their love of books together. I would strongly recommend more family-friendly library programs such as the Nancy Drew Scavenger Hunt. I would increase book varieties and make sure there are more movies for older children to check out. Last but not least, I would make sure there are plenty of materials in other languages and volunteers who speak other languages. As mayor of Richfield, this is how I would make our library better.
Thank you. Can I ask you a few questions Hazel? That is a very beautiful poem. So you got to select any profession or everybody wrote about being mayor?
I think everybody wrote.
And did you pick the library because that's one of your favorite things? So you like to read and all of that? Well, I mean, we can actually like take these suggestions and share it with the county and see if these are things that they're already doing, or if we can actually make those changes happen. So, thank you so much Hazel for coming and opening the meeting for us and being mayor for the day, for making those suggestions, for writing your essay. And I know that the council would like to take a picture with you. So is that fine? Do you want to do it behind the council dais, or do you want to do it up front?
Behind.
Behind? And I bet you want to hold the gavel too, right? Okay. We can stand, we can stand behind you Mayor Hazel. Do you want to sit down, or you can take the gavel and stand up too? And we'll take a picture. Oh, there you go. Thank you so much Hazel, and thank you for your leadership and your inspiration for mayor of the day, for a day. And I don't know if you guys are going to be leaving or not, but if you stay for a little bit, maybe Hazel can sit here next to Councilmember Supple for a little and watch a piece, be a part of our agenda in our council meeting if you want.
Sure.
Yeah, if you want to go for a little bit. Okay, great. You can sit here with us. Thank you so much Hazel.
Your honor Hazel, if folks come up here and they're not happy with you, it's because they love the city a lot. Just remember that.
All right. So, the next item on our agenda is Hats Off to Hometown Hits. I think we started with you last time, right? Or no? Did we start?
We started, we do Mary last time, right?
Okay, so Councilmember Troutman, have we, oh, yes. Oh, correct. Excuse me. Mad, you know, Mayor Hazel, we're supposed to move the minutes. You're supposed to remind us of that. That was my fault. So, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting of January 22nd, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been made and the approval has passed of the minutes. Okay, now we can go to hats off. And we said with Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you Mayor Gonzalez. I have, I have one, one hats off to hometown tits, one notice, but it's three, it's three different events or activities. Now is the beginning of registration for spring youth athletic sports. So that's youth soccer, there's competitive, and intramural soccer, and softball, and baseball. And having, having used and availed those, myself of those sports when I was a kid, just incredible opportunities to learn in leadership. You learn things when you win. You learn things when you don't win. And for moms and dads that are, that are thinking, there's so many things, there's so many things that kids can do. But we just signed Justice, our oldest, up for soccer. And we're really excited for that. And it's a tremendous opportunity to get to know your neighbors better, to have your, your kids develop in, in leadership and service and teamwork. And so, just invite folks to find the sport that works best, if, if sports work for your kids. And, and sign them up all throughout the month. And in, in the beginning of March is the open enrollment period.
Great, thank you so much. Councilman?
Mayor, if you need, there, there are different websites, but if you go to the Richfield website and you go to Parks and Rec, you can log in and you can access all the, all the, the different sites. So Parks, Parks and Rec at the Richfield City website. Sorry about that.
No problem. Councilmember Supple?
Good evening. I want to highlight that the Richfield Arts Commission, I didn't know this, hosted a display for artists at the community center. And so they put up the artwork for two months and it's featured there. And they're booking like from October of this year out into 2020. So if there's anybody out there that would like to show their artwork and feature their artwork, they are looking for people to highlight. As well as there's a display case here at the municipal center that they're looking for things like pottery and 3D woodworking, anything, small sculptures. So if you have some undiscovered artists out there that would like to share your talent, we could do that. And it can be, and people of any age. So it doesn't, it could be like one of the schools. It could be an artist that's developing their career. It could be a senior, anyone. So, we're looking for a lot of arts. The other thing is I just also wanted to say thank you to our Public Works Department and the public safety with all of the weather that's been going on. They have done a tremendous job. And so, we, I've heard from a lot of people where they've come to their rescue. So thank you.
Mayor Hazel, do you want to participate in our Hats Off? I can, Hats Off to Hometown Hits, I can tell you what it's about.
Sure.
Okay, so this is the portion of the city council meeting where we either highlight an upcoming event in Richfield, where we say thank you. Maybe we saw a resident or a staff member, you know, go above and beyond and give recognition. So is there anything in the past few weeks that has happened here in your community that you'd want to tell people about, or something coming up in Richfield?
Not that I know of.
I know we put you on the spot a little bit. Anything at your school coming up?
Uh, no, not much except, you know, Valentine's Day party and stuff like that.
Oh, that's true. Valentine's Day parties across the school.
Yeah.
Great. Well, thank you. If you think of something, let us know.
All right, I will.
Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you Mayor. I just want to mention, we had a citizen that passed away this, in the last few days. And it's Lorraine Nielsen. You have probably heard, heard of her a little bit because, through her family. Her family runs the Nielsen Funeral Home. And Lorraine, you know, that's a very, that was a very, very close family. And they, they really were good, solid citizens of Richfield. And I know that Lorraine and Mick, it's Morris, but the father's nickname was Mick. And the younger Morris is nicknamed Maury. So anyway, so one time I was at their house and they, you know, they, they were kind enough to do a fundraiser for me. This is another thing you should know about the Neilsens is, they don't, I, you know, they, they won't, they don't have a political party. They vote for the person. They support the person, which hats off to them. I wish more of us would do that. But anyway, so I was at their home and, and saw her collection of, what do they call their, their handbells? You know, you just hold them and then you, you know, when, and when you want to make music or whatever. And anyway, so she was, she was a member of Woodlake Lutheran Church and participated in, in, in the church with her handbells. And she enjoyed it so much and she was so good at it that they later, she put together a Logan Avenue Basement Bell Group. So it was just, you know, if you've never heard them before, it's very, very soft and very nice. So, the other thing about her to know is that, you know, she volunteered to be a streetcar driver. And if you remember the olden days, well, you probably don't. And the streetcars that used to go. And anyway, so she worked, she volunteered for the Lake Harriet, you know, area that's volunteered with the Minnesota Transportation Museum. And it, it just is odd because, you know, that's the same streetcar that she rode on when she went to work in her younger days. So, it was really nice. The other thing, you know, like I said, I only know two of their children, you know, two of Maury and, I mean Mick's and Lorraine's kids. One of them is Maury from, from his work. He's also just a tremendous, tremendous community builder. And, you know, they, they, they're very, they're contribute, but they're very quiet about their contribution. You know, they're, they're, and, and their daughter Dawn, and I don't, I believe that she was the first female firefighter in Richfield. And she retired. But, I mean, it was really, really special because Dawn was just, you know, it was, at that time, it was kind of a novelty. You know, but, but she was a terrific individual too. And, and this whole family has been community builders to this, in the city of Richfield. Okay, so we, we extend our condolences to the family. Okay, next I want to tell you about the, the city council is meeting with our legislators. And that's going to be happening Friday, the 15th, coming up at 9:15. And it'll be in the Bartholomew Room. So if you're interested, you know, it's, it's open to anyone that's interested in coming to listen or to participate or whatever. So. The other thing that's happening is on Tuesday, the 19th, at 10:00 a.m. at the Academy of Holy Angels will be the naturalization ceremony. And that usually is very well attended and supported by the community. So invite you to take part in that. The other thing is that on Wednesday, the 20th of February, the community center is the place where you will find our Richfield Police. And they will be sponsoring a fraud and scam event. You know, I don't, this, this fraud and scam, usually seniors, the elderly are called. And, you know, you, you get sold a bill of goods and you have to write a check and send some money in. And in return, you're going to get all this fabulous stuff or money. It doesn't happen like that. So, this is kind of a training to alert people as to what kind of fraud and scammers there are. So that we can be really, really know what the heck's going on. And it's a great thing to have, to bring, to bring your parents. Because, you know, we can't, we always do the best we can for our folks. But, I mean, this is, this is 100% positive. And I believe that's all, but I also wanted to extend my thanks to Public Works. I mean, the challenge of all that snow, and Mary, I think you said it, well, the challenge of all that snow was just something else. So, just want to thank them and Tom, we appreciate them.
Thank you Councilmember Garcia. My first one will be, thank you to, and my hat goes off, my hat goes off to Mayor Hazel. Thank you so much for participating in the competition and for writing such amazing things that you would do here in Richfield. And we will be following up with Hennepin County to see what can be done about your ideas. And before I escort you back to your family, I wanted to ask if I could get your autograph on your?
Can I make one comment? I'm looking forward to finding, you know, 10 to 15 years from now, voting for you for something, so.
Thank you so much Hazel. And then I will continue on with the other hats off that I have. So I know we already mentioned this, but I kind of wanted to go through some of the detail because I think so many people don't know all of the things. And this isn't everything, but this is just a little bit of what our city staff have been doing the past few weeks in the polar vortex with all of the snow, with all of this ice. And it is important to share with folks all the things that they're doing around the clock. And this is what our staff does all the time. But what a difference it makes. And we don't even necessarily notice it, but it really has made a huge difference. In this past two weeks, the, the work that our staff did was just exceptional. So, you know, in addition to the stories of city staff, firefighters, police helping shovel folks out of ditches, and, you know, one of the stories was our firefighters shoveling patients' driveway and making sure it was clear because that was something they were not able to do. Again, this is something that, that our folks do constantly, whether it's, it's or not. But the impact that they have had in the past few weeks have been tremendous. So, a couple of specific examples. Our Public Works, Public Safety, Fire, and staff taking and responding to calls around the clock. Our city manager doing that as well. Our communication staff, it has been all hands on deck the past few weeks. Making sure that folks have regular updates, whether it's on our city website, whether it's through emails, text messages, social media, making sure that things have, people know about cold weather safety precautions. Making sure that residents have Hennepin County resources provided to them as well. Consistent communication. There was many water break, water main breaks across the city with the temperatures fluctuating. And our city staff was constantly helping folks resolve these water main break issues ASAP. And sending out notifications immediately to residents and businesses that were impacted. We were also responding to reports of frozen water line services and visiting affected properties and notifying residents about things that they could be doing to prevent that, like insulating our pipes, keeping the rooms open and circulation. Making sure that the city was replacing the frozen water meters, which is part of, you know, the city staff's responsibility to make sure that these are being replaced. But our meters were also problematic. Having, having and responding to all of these things around the clock. Working with Excel Energy to switch off some of our energy use to generator power so that we could work on helping balance the need for energy across the metro. Public Safety was taking daily conference calls with the Hennepin County Emergency Management to assess what precautions we could be taking and making sure that our employees and our citizens were safe. Our public health nurses were calling and in-person visiting our seniors and our most vulnerable community members to make sure they were safe and in their homes and had what they needed to get through the past few weeks. Officers were issued hand warmers and had blankets in their cars. They were helping place people in the back of their squad cars to make sure that if someone was stuck in the ditch or outside, that they were in the car keeping warm. And they were transporting people to shelters as needed as well. So, you know, we were canceling and rescheduling our ICE times, there's our recreational services. There's so many things that residents might not even know that the city staff have been doing. Canceling our outside building inspections to make sure that our staff, you know, aren't out in that weather if, if it's not necessary. And following up on resident concerns in, in our apartments as well. So that is just, I wanted to go through that. That's not an inclusive list of all of the things our city staff have been doing. But it is extremely important that our residents know, you know, all the, all the things that, that folks have been doing in the past few weeks. And just like the rest of the council members have said, we really do commend and thank our staff for, for doing that. And want to make sure that, that our residents are well aware of the amazing work that, that staff have been doing. So, thank you. Hats off to our city staff. The second item I had, I guess it's the third, is next Wednesday, February 20th, at 5:30 at the Richfield Middle School, we will be having the state of the community. So that's, that's my version of the state of the city. So the mayor every year has the opportunity to share the state of the city and what the vision is for the next year and the future of our community. So this year, we're doing it in a more collaborative method where we're asking our schools to come to the table, our businesses and our community members to come and talk about what the state of Richfield looks like as an entire community. We will also be having our congressional district representative Ilhan Omar come and give a very brief update on what she has been doing and working on. come and give a very brief update on what she has been doing and working on as well. But we'll have food, we'll have some entertainment by local youth. And we'll also have, it's, it's an opportunity to come together as a community, get inspired and engaged in moving the future of Richfield forward. So that's on our website, it's on our social media. And that's next Wednesday at five thirty, and that's the State of the Community. And the last item that I have is tomorrow, we have a special election to fill the Ward Three City Council seat. So reminding all of the folks in Ward Three, which are the households east of Portland Avenue, to please go out and vote. We know that the, the, a lot of people might not know about this special election and it's a cold November day, but it's extremely important that folks go out and vote. And that is it. So the next item is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
So moved.
Thank you. The agenda has been approved. The next item will go to City Manager Rodriguez, and that's the Consent Calendar.
Thank you, Mayor. The Consent Calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the Consent Calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. Item A, consideration of the approval of a small wireless facility, co-location agreement with new singular wireless doing business as AT&amp;T Mobility that sets forth the terms and conditions of co-location and wireless support structures within the city right of way. Item B, consideration of the adoption of a resolution to adopt the Richfield Surface Water Management Plan. Item C, consideration of the adoption of a resolution authorizing the city of Richfield to accept grants of ten thousand and enter into a source water protection competitive grant agreement with Minnesota Department of Health to permanently seal unique well two zero six three three zero Wood Lake. And item D, consideration of the approval of the first reading of an ordinance amending section six one seven of the Richfield City Code regulating food establishments for consistency with recently updated state regulation. And those are submitted for your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Calendar?
So moved.
Second.
And I'm just going to take a moment. I know there was a few comments that we wanted to make on one of the items, and I'll pass it over to Councilmember Supple.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We received a couple of inquiries from residents about the small wireless facilities. And we asked city staff to do some research for us. And I just wanted to share what they brought forward to us because that would answer the questions that came forward. Apparently, in two thousand seventeen, the Minnesota Legislature passed some legislation that requires cities to approve these small wireless facilities. What is in our purview or our authority is that we can figure out the permitting process and come up with the agreements. So what we're looking at tonight is that permitting process and coming up with the agreement. And one of the things in the agreement is that we have to follow the FCC regulations for the radio frequency emissions and the safety, things like that. But as far as whether or not we would allow them to be here, we are required by state law to do so. So the people that had the concerns will need to talk to legislators because that's not anything that's under our authority. So I just wanted to share that information because I knew nothing about it. So I appreciate city staff filling us in on that. And then we shared that back with the residents. And there probably are other people wondering the same thing. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. All in favor?
Aye.
The Consent Calendar has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Supple.
Thank you. The item for consideration is the second reading of an ordinance amending section three hundred of the Richfield City Code to formally establish the offices of city treasurer and city clerk. So on January twenty-second of two thousand nineteen, the city council approved the first reading of this ordinance. And it's because Minnesota Statute Section four one two point six eight one states that cities with a council city manager form of government must have an office of city treasurer and an office of city clerk that are subordinate to the city manager. These two offices must be created by city ordinance. The current ordinance does not formally establish these offices, although they've existed in the city for some time. So this is a housekeeping measure. And staff is recommending that section three hundred of the Richfield City Code be amended to establish these two offices and designate the finance director as the city treasurer. So that would bring us into compliance with state law. So I would like to move that we approve the second reading of an ordinance amending section three hundred of the Richfield City Code to formally establish the offices of city treasurer and city clerk.
I'm just wondering if, if maybe Mr. Regis has anything to say?
Um, no, not really. Like, like the staff report said, this is really just a housekeeping measure. And we just need to establish these two positions within the city.
Okay. Well, I would like to hear you talk.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion has been approved. Thank you. Item number seven goes to Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a consideration of the adoption of a resolution approving the contract with the Labor and Trades Local Forty-nine for the period of January one, two thousand nineteen, through December thirty-one, two thousand twenty, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. City staff has completed labor negotiations with the Labor and Trades Local Forty-nine. And the provisions of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty labor agreement cover all of the employee, employees in this union, which consists of thirty-two positions. The two-year contract provides a wage adjustment of three percent and twenty nineteen and a wage adjustment of three percent in twenty twenty. It also includes an equity adjustment in both contract years to the top steps of the LT one and LT two pay grades in order to bring those wages more closely in line with other similarly sized metro area cities. This was done after a thorough analysis of metro wages by staff. And the agreement includes the same employer-provided health insurance contributions as given to the city's non-represented employee groups and bargaining units. It also provides nominal increases to the uniform boot, boot allowance and some licensure certification pay rates. And before this goes to a motion, I just want to, I just want to say a couple of thank yous. I want to thank our, our assistant city manager Pam Demetranko for negotiating this and our HR director Jesse Swenson and our new city manager Katie Rodriguez for bringing this together. And, and I'd just be remiss if I didn't take a minute and just thank our staff. Because if you love Richfield, it's because we got great people working in Richfield. We have great people living in Richfield. But if, if things look right and they run right and our, our roads, every time, I just, I feel good every time we, we cross on, on weeks like this week, we cross into Richfield and those roads are spotless. And if it takes an extra couple of hours, it takes an extra week or so in other cities that should remain nameless. So we're just really proud of all, all of our staff and just really grateful for the leadership of our directors and, and our staff. And so with, I think, I think I would, I would move, I'll move this motion. But I just want to take a moment to, to thank all, all levels of our staff before I do that. Any, any comments?
No, I think you were right on.
Good. Then I would move we adopt a resolution approving the provisions of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty labor agreement with the Labor and Trades Local Forty-nine bargaining unit and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
Second. And I'd just like to echo another, we have another successful year. Thank you to Pam for, for those negotiations. And we're very, very fortunate. So thank you very much, Pam, for all your hard work.
Pam may want to say something. Do you have anything to say, Pam?
Um, I just, I, I guess just the fact that we're acknowledging the work of, of this group of employees. And I think, you know, we are really pleased to be able to arrive at this agreement with them and acknowledging their work that they do, so.
Good.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Supple.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We are considering the adoption of a resolution establishing a policy for advisory boards and commissions appointment preference. And this was discussed at a previous meeting, that we wanted to have a very clear and transparent process so people would know what to expect when they would apply for commissions. So each year, the city recruits to fill those openings on boards and commissions. And we recently have had many more applicants than openings. This year, we had thirty-six, thirty-six applicants to fill twenty-three openings. And currently, the city ordinance limits commissioners to three consecutive terms, and they may only serve on one commission at a time. However, in nineteen ninety-three, the council approved a resolution policy that provided where there were more applicants than openings, there would be a preference for reappointments to second terms over new applicants and for new applicants over reappointments to third terms. That resolution was repealed when the ordinance language was cleaned up in two thousand fifteen. If we reinstate that policy by resolution, it would maintain the flexibility in the appointments and create a more proactive process to appoint new applicants. By including the policy in recruiting documents, including the application forms, it would also create a more transparent recruitment and selection process. So would you, Madam Mayor, would you like me to read the actual resolution or was that enough?
Um, no, I don't think so.
All right, thank you. Well, then I will move that we adopt a resolution establishing a policy for advisory boards and commission appointment preference.
Is there a second?
Second.
And I just want to make a comment quick. I spoke to the mayor of Bloomington today and a couple other mayors. And they were saying, you know, this is happening all over, which is a good sign. We have not just Richfield, but a lot of other cities have a lot of residents who are extremely interested in joining their boards and commissions. And whereas just a few years ago, a handful of years ago, we were struggling and fighting and begging folks to come and join our commissions and couldn't fill the positions. And so we're not the only city looking at different ways to make sure that we're opening up opportunities for, for folks to join our boards and commissions. And I want to say thank you to staff for looking into this. And, and also thank you to Jared for putting the list together and keeping it current and keeping our residents connected. We now have a list where if you were unable to make it to a board and commission, you know, we want to make sure that residents who want to be engaged are able to be engaged. And we provide them a list of resources and connection to other organizations across the city who are looking for board members, who are looking for volunteers. So thank you to our staff for that. And thank you to all the residents of Richfield who just have showed a lot of interest and passion in getting involved. Yes.
I just wanted to say that it says a lot about Richfield that we've had such a huge turnout. And it was really hard trying to decide who to pick. There was a huge volume of very talented, passionate people that really want to make Richfield a better place. So I think it's a good problem to have, to have so many wonderful people out there.
Any other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. This is consideration of the approval of agreements with nonprofit organizations to provide social services to the city of Richfield, i.e. the residents, and authorize in the city manager to execute those agreements with the agencies receiving the funding. The nine, the two thousand nineteen city budget includes funding for organizations that provide social services that are benefit to the Richfield community. The budget includes seventy thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars for this purpose. And, and we had, we had more than, than that of applicants. There, there was twenty thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars over for, over the amount that we had. So unfortunately, you know, we weren't able to fund them to the full, to the, to what, what they asked for fully. But of the nine proposals, I will read, I will read what we funded them. And when we fund these proposals, you know, there, there, there's a lot of scrutiny. And there's a lot of, you know, hoops that they need to jump. But we expect for these organizations to have a five oh one C three status and, and comply with, with the rules that, you know, when, when, when we send out the RFPs with, you know, with what they asked for and make sure that they deliver. So Headway, otherwise known as storefront, because we can't, we can't let storefront go. And, and speaking of storefront, we have Pat Dale. Hi, Pat. Pat Dale, who runs Headway. And Pat has been with Headway storefront forever and a day. I mean, that's the only job he's ever had. But he started, started at the bottom, worked his way up to, to CEO and CFO. So, and he's, he's always been part of the community. He's involved in some of the community organizations. So, you know, that's really appreciated, Pat, because, you know, you, you care enough for the city where you may not live here, but you care, care enough for the city to, to be around and, and help and contribute. And oftentimes, I, I've seen you over here at Cub grilling hamburgers and hot dogs and trying to raise money for the Optimist Club. And that money will go to, to young children and, and their activities. So anyway, sorry, I, I digress. Anyway, Headway will be receiving nine thousand dollars. Cornerstone will be receiving twelve thousand, five hundred. And Trail, which is the transportation resource to aid independent living, they will be receiving four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And VEEP, which is volunteers enlisted to assist people, will be receiving, let me see, what is it, twenty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. Loaves and Fishes will be receiving eight thousand dollars. The Family Partnership did not receive any money this year. And the Senior Community Services is receiving nine thousand dollars. And MIDA, which is the Modelo de Información de Recursos y Apoyo, will be receiving two thousand dollars. And the Richfield Family Stability Work Group will be receiving four thousand, five hundred dollars. And that totals twenty, seventy thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. And we have, that committee is made up of Lynette Chambers and Julie Urban from the city. And myself. And then we have Camila DeSantis and Mary Olafson. And we all gather and, and, you know, and discuss these. And so they, they, you know, they receive a lot of scrutiny in writing. And also, you know, when we, when we talk about this and it's, and thank God that we're blessed that we have this money that we can distribute. Julie, do you have anything?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez, councilmembers, I don't have anything to add. Just except also thank you for the valuable services these organizations provide for us.
And thank you, Julie. I appreciate, you know, what, what's your title, Julie? You're housing?
I'm a housing manager, yes. So I oversee our single family and multi-family housing programs. And we just sort of inherited the social service funding a few years ago.
Well, that's good. It's great to have you. And, you know, you're, you're, you're a big help in getting things done and in actually sitting there with your little calculator and adding things up for us. And, you know, you're a real plus to have on the committee. Thank you. So Mayor, I will make the motion. Let me find it here. Make the motion that. Make the motion that we approve the agreements between the recommended nonprofit organizations, the city of Richfield, for the residents, and authorize our city manager to execute set documents for services with those agencies.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Garcia, could I just say something briefly?
Of course.
I just wanted to take a moment. We could tell a lot of stories about a lot of these organizations, but I'd just like to, to just talk about what a tremendous value we're getting for seventy thousand dollars from these nonprofits. And specifically, I'm thinking of Cornerstone that advocates for victims of domestic violence. And when we say they advocate for victims of domestic violence, every single individual who comes through our public safety department has a Cornerstone advocate, every single one, and they're following up with our public safety officers. Every week, they go to trial with them, they go to court. When they're not in court, they're following up, and we're investing twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Just a tremendous, tremendous return on our investment. So, I want to say thank you, thank you to all you guys, but thank you to Cornerstone, and thanks for, thank you for staff for putting this together.
I'll second the motion.
And before we take the final vote, I just want to make a couple comments, too. Thank you to the staff, thank you to the resident Camila De Santos, thank you to Councilmember Garcia for working on this and helping make these difficult decisions. And most importantly, thank you to these organizations. One of the things that residents constantly talk to me about is how surprised they are of all the different community resources, programming, and support they have. And that is because of the city and what we provide, but also because of these great organizations and ensuring that our nonprofits and organizations here in our community are strong is going to help us have a strong city and connected and well-supported residents. So, thank you to all those folks that were involved, and we're very fortunate. All right, so it was moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion has been approved. The next item is a closed session in relationship to attorney-client privileges in discussion for Hennessy County District Court File Twenty-seven CV eighteen one six five zero two involving the city's acquisition of the Motel Six property. We will be going into our closed session, and then we will be coming back to finish
Oh.
Oh, you did?
I think so. I don't know, maybe I didn't even bring it. Yeah. Could be.
We can look for it afterward. Okay, we're
A lot of incriminating evidence there.
All right, we are back. And moving on to the next item, which is consideration of the adoption of a resolution authorizing a stipulated award of commissioners for the acquisition of Motel 6 property as required for the construction of the Seventy Seventh Street-Richfield Parkway project. Based on council actions at the September 11th, 2018 council meeting, the city made a deposit on January 22nd, 2019 for the 4.6 million appraised value of Motel 6 property with the district court. A closed session will be held on February 11th, 2019, which just happened, to consider a counter offer by the property owner. If accepted, this resolution authorizes staff to direct final payment and complete property acquisition per the term of the officer. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
And the motion is to adopt a resolution authorizing a stipulated award of commissioners for the acquisition of the Motel 6 property